Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Okay, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know I need to sit instead of adjusting this chair. Isn't that fun? That's the best part.
Okay, thank you all for attending. Today's statement is, "It is not the same to talk of bulls as to be in the bull ring." So, I think that applies to politics. Okay.
Really?
Mark's standing.
Okay, under resolutions, need to motion through the Job and Family Bills for Payment?
So moved.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There are no advances today. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
I have an exception. 5:32.
And we did take a vote, I'm sorry.
We did? All right. Then let's move on to either number two.
Okay, travel expenses?
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need to authorize various personal actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
So moved.
I think we need an executive session, I was told today.
That's fine.
Right, we'll be requesting executive session for the specific purposes of talking potential new hires, possible disciplinary issue, and I also believe the prosecutor has a matter of litigation.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Need to authorize the return of funds to the Ohio Lake Area Commission in the amount of $17,751.25 for the expenses associated with the Lorraine County Model zoning and community guide project. This project was an Ohio Lake Area Commission grant. Project was completed in January 2002, and on February 14, 2002, the Ohio Lake Area Commission approved the final report and closed the grant file, subject to the return of unspent funds. Need to authorize the President to execute all documents on behalf of the Board.
Also moved.
One second.
Discussion?
Ron, one real quick question. Will we be getting a copy of this report?
Ron Twining, Community Development Director, TWIING. I have forwarded a copy of both of the reports, the Carlisle Plan, which was really intended to be two Carlisle themselves. We can make photocopies if you want, but I've given a copy of that and the community guide to the county administrator so that the Commissioners have that on file. We have a copy over in ours. Anything beyond that, we would have to photocopy. The Commissioners wish I can make photocopies available to them.
We do have a copy in the office, though?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just look at ours.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ron.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to award the following bids for various highway materials for the County Engineers Department for the asphalt plant mixes to CNS Limestone of Columbia Station, Ohio, in the amount of $175,500. The engineered estimate of cost was $185,000. For asphalt emulsion to Crossroads Asphalt Recycling of Columbia Station, Ohio, in the amount of $194,000. The engineered estimate was $290,000. And for limestone aggregate to CNS Limestone in the amount of $123,150. Engineered estimate of cost was $125,000. This was the only bid received. The above awards are the lowest and most responsive bids received complying with specifications, and funds are available in the motor vehicle gas tax materials account.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into subdivision agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Scott Dillon, developer Ravines Edge subdivision number one, Carlisle Township. Developer has deposited $323,723.13 in escrow to be held by Chicago Title Company for this project. Liability insurance and escrow agreement are also attached, and the county engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into the following lease agreement between the Board of Commissioners and A, the Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency for offices located at 424-85 North Ridge Road, Alariah, Ohio. Leases for a period of 12 months, effective retroactive to November 1, 2001, ending October 31, 2002. The rental amount for 2002 is $111,703, or that would equal $9,308.58 monthly, and that is at $6.82 per square foot. And B with the Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services for offices also located at 424-85 North Ridge Road, Alariah, Ohio. Leases for a period of 12 months, effective retroactive to November 1, 2001, ending October 31, 2002. The rental amount for 2002 was $403,638, which equals $33,636.50 monthly. That equals up to $6.78 per square foot. Both of the above agreements do contain a written cancellation clause.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to accept the quote submitted by Murray Ridge Production Center, Incorporated of Alariah, Ohio, to clean the employment and training network offices on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays at $56 per day. Tile floors will be buffed monthly, stripped wax annually. Interior glass to be spot cleaned weekly, fully cleaned monthly. Exterior windows will be cleaned on a quarterly basis, along with a normal cleaning, example vacuuming of carpets, trash removal, mopping of floors, et cetera. The cost does not include cleaning supplies and equipment.
Also moved. I think it's an excellent idea.
I agree. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to accept proposal submitted by...
Sorry, I was pointing out to Commissioner Blair that some time ago, and she probably forgot, that she asked me to look into trying to have the county participate in that program. And it took a little while, but we did find an area where we could participate with our friends out at MRDD. I was pointing out to her that it was her idea, it was just their idea.
Thank you.
Like to accept proposal submitted by Janine Donaldson of the YWCA, Special Project Manager, to enter into lease agreement with the YWCA for a period of three years, with an option for new for an additional two years. The lease will provide the county with 39 parking spaces at a cost of $15 per space a month for a total monthly payment of $585. This agreement allows the county to have exclusive use of the lot Monday through Friday until 5:00 p.m.
Do we have an opt-out clause in here?
We have all kinds of clauses. The Prosecutor's Office has done a tremendous job making sure the county is covering this. I'd like to ask at this juncture that we hold on this. I'm going to have to discuss with the Board some issues pending on parking. I was going to do that under my report, maybe we can address these all at the same time. That would be acceptable to the Board.
Okay, make sure there's a clause in there, the 30-day option to opt-out if we have to.
Did you review that? We have a draft of the agreement, and if that's what you want to put in, then I'll put a clause.
Yeah, because it may not need a...
I don't think the draft currently...
Oh, we're doing our...
Karen just left. I don't think it currently is in there, but...
I thought we were just voting on whether or not to accept the proposal, then we still got to work out the agreement, don't we?
Exactly.
Well, then, why wait?
It's fine, whatever the point you put is. I'm going to have some dialogue with the Board concerning the parking issue, but we can go ahead and... That proposal is an integral part of that dialogue, so if you want to vote on that...
Would your dialogue affect this? I mean, did you find parking somewhere else, and we may not need this?
Oh, no.
That's what I'm saying, right?
This is definitely needed, so maybe I should just have my discussion under my time period, but I do need this, too.
All right, because I talked with Ken Carney, the engineer, yesterday, I believe it was, and we have land out there on Hattaway, and he mentioned that that land could be available for construction, for the contractors to park out there, or the employees, and shuttle them back and forth. And there's a lot of land out there that we could use, and that's where the Park 'Em Ride is. So, I mean, that's another option that we... You're probably exploring it, I don't know for sure.
Well, I...
It's covered for each one of you. I'm sorry. You need this in addition to that. That what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second Commissioner Moore's motion to approve this, or accept this proposal.
Any more discussion?
If I might, you indicated a 30-day opt-out clause. We're going to have to discuss that. Could Mr. Cortez and I have the leeway to go like a 30 to 90-day?
We're not talking... All we're doing is accepting the proposal, we're not talking about the actual itemized...
Okay, well, just to help us...
I'm just saying, we need to get the ball rolling so you can bring us the proposal.
Okay, I'm just indicating 30 might be a little tight, so we'll get an opt-out clause in there, but we might want to work in the parameters of 30 to 90 or something.
Okay, we're accepting this, and then we'll vote on the contract or the agreement later.
Right, right. I just wanted to lock up the lot, so we had it locked up.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need to authorize the Board of Commissioners to provide home repair assistance to Tom Bodison, James Orr, Sr., and Lauren Hartzell to tie into the sewer along Schwartz Road in the city of Avon, Ohio. Lorraine County Community Development Department has been taking applications for the home repair assistance through Lorraine County Community's Housing Improvement Program, that's a CHIP program, specifically its CDVG funds. The homeowners previously mentioned meet the grant requirements. The city of Avon requires all three properties to connect to the city sewer line. The following property owners will receive assistance in the form of a grant not to exceed $8,000. This would be broke down on Tom Bodison, a bid amount $8,034.71. Community Development Department will pay $8,000. The contractor is Lad Trucking, Incorporated. For James Orr, a bid amount was $7,734.71. Community Development Department will pay $7,734.71, and the contractor is Lad Trucking, Incorporated. Lauren Hartzell, a bid amount $8,595.71. Community Development will pay $8,000, and the contractor is Kodiak Construction. All permit fees will be paid to the city of Avon, Ohio, in the amount of $2,271.11 per property owner. Community Development Department is requesting permission to spend funds on behalf of the homeowners, and are only acting as fiscal agent to these homeowners.
Who pays the rest of that?
The property owners pay the balance beyond the $8,000. We have letters on file where they have indicated they will do that.
Okay.
Could you explain the program?
This is part of our CHIP program, the house improvement strategy to improve houses for low-income and elderly folks in Lorraine County that are having a difficult time making home improvements that are necessary. Here is a particular case where obviously it would have cost the homeowners at least this $8,000, and in some cases, we had received prices... We bid this three times in order to get these competitive prices. At one venture, we were looking at $14,000 if we bid them out as a package deal. If the individual homeowners had banded together and the two people split one boring, if they had done that themselves, they probably, as a low-income resident, would have been faced with about $15,000 as their own share. So, not only are we providing them $8,000, the worst-case scenario, it's less than $600 to get this, what could have been originally a $15,000 connection to the sewer line.
And Ron, this will be forgiven. It's given as a grant because sometimes the sewer...
Provided that they stay in the house five-year period.
That's what I knew. It's only a five-year period?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Good job.
Thanks.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Like to authorize down payment assistance with Lorraine County CHIP funds in the amount of $8,500 to Tina M. Ferguson and Donna S. Seber to purchase 4890 Ivanhoe Avenue in Sheffield Lake, Ohio. They will obtain a mortgage from First Ohio Mortgage Corporation of Independence, Ohio. This home was inspected by Pogomire Design Group, consultants for the Lorraine County CHIP program, and found to be safe and sound. The repair work that's necessary to bring this home up to code has been estimated at $5,170. The $8,500 will be made payable to the Millennium Title Company.
This was a program for first-time buyers?
Yes, Commissioners, first-time buyer. We are supposed to provide assistance over a three-year period for five homeowners. This is the third one that we've been successful in helping.
Good, thanks, Ron.
Any more discussion, Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Like to approve and enter into Lorraine County Area-Wide Micro-Enterprise Loan Program, that's a LAMP, agreements between the Board of Commissioners and A, Small Business Development Center located at the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce in Lorraine, Ohio; B, the Women's Development Center located at Lorraine County Community College in Alariah, Ohio; and C, Lorraine County Job Vocational School, Oberlin, Ohio. All the above agreements are not to exceed $5,000 per year for 2002, 2003, and 2004. The training is offered at a cost of not more than $250 per participant, and the technical assistance cost is $100 per participant. These costs range depending on the income of the participant. All agreements contain a 30-day written cancellation clause. Need to authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, what's the $100 technical charge?
You may have me on that one. I know that we provide assistance as far as the training. There's a 13-weeks next-level course that we provide, I believe, but I will put in writing to clarify this. I believe that $100 are for follow-up visits with the LAMP applicants to make sure as they're applying for the money, or after they receive money, if they're successful, to go out either by any of these three entities as an aftercare to make sure that if they're having a difficult time on preparing their business plan, that they have follow-up aftercare to give them assistance. And I believe that's what that is, and it was set at $100 per applicant.
So, that's not included in the 250, so actually 250 is 350 per person?
Not everybody receives or has to have that. It's only a select few. I believe to date, we have 48 people that we have taken care of, 49 perhaps, and I think we've only had to use that $100 once or twice. It's rarely used, but it is there in case a particular LAMP candidate needs some further assistance. We just don't train them and leave them alone.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Need to authorize the following reimbursement payments to the cities of Oberlin and Amherst, Ohio, and the county of Lorraine from the CDVG Fiscal Year '99 funds. For A, Oberlin, Ohio has submitted an invoice seeking reimbursement up to $763 for sidewalks installed by the city as part of their park facilities improvements to Spring Street Park. B, Amherst, Ohio has submitted an invoice seeking reimbursement up to $1,500 for engineering design work for the basement restroom renovation to their city hall. And C, the county of Lorraine can be reimbursed for salaries, photocopies, printing, postage, and other administrative reimbursement costs, up to $45,023.48 for miscellaneous expenses that count.
Also moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Ron.
Why don't you just stay at the microphone, Ron?
Yeah, these are all your issues, Ron.
They're already giving me a hard time, too much mic time, but yes, sir.
Ron doesn't have issues, do you? I didn't think... I thought they withdrew this for the basement work, number B. I thought they withdrew it. Remember, there was 285?
They withdrew one year and then reapplied the following year to do it. We also then, as a part of the '99 grant, we had to actually bid a second time because the bid award date was surpassed, and we bid it a second time, did the work, and now they're asking... We have $1,500 after we bid it the second time. There was a cost saving. The first time, the city, the bids came in high, higher than we had expected, and the city would have had to have provided some of the fund. They were willing to do that, but we rebid a second time, and it actually came in at $1,500 left, and we are authorized to reimburse for engineering or design expenses, and that's what Amherst has done.
Okay, I thought we're reimbursing it for engineer or design work.
Right.
Didn't they do that already in '99?
As a part of the '99 project, that was...
Which was canceled?
That was canceled. It was...
Were you paid for it then, too?
No, we didn't pay for it then. Their actual submittal was for like $3,800, I believe. We're only paying the amount that's left. And this design work, one of the reasons it was withdrawn in '97 or '98 was because the electric... They were supposed to renovate the whole basement, and they finally came back and just renovated these two restrooms, so the electric had to be redesigned and upgraded, and they made fan changes, exhaust fan changes, and things like that. So, that's where the cost occurred for this particular program here.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to approve and enter into an agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Children's World Learning Center of Avon Lake, Ohio, for childcare services effective retroactive to February 15, 2002, expiring December 31, 2002, and authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Need to accept the recommendation of the Tax and Senate Review Council and approve the TARP report, which includes 40 tax abatement agreements. These agreements were approved by the committee on February 22 and 25, 2002. Three abatements expired during the year 2001, and another four will expire during calendar year 2002, and the county entered into four new abatements in 2001. All abatements were found in compliance, and 37 will be continued.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Ron, did you want to talk, or did you wait for a question?
This is the one I wanted to talk about. If I could give some information to the Board of Commissioners, Rebecca Jones and the rest of the staff worked hard on this, and we think that it's important to give some highlights on just exactly what happens during these annual reviews, and I will do that quickly. In total, over two days, about 15 minutes apart, we met with 40 different abatement companies, or different abatements. 33 different companies were involved in those 40 abatements. 37 were recommended for continuation. Three expired, and that's the difference between the 40 and the 37. We have four that are due to expire at the end of this year. We have four new ones that came online, Poly One, Beckett Air, and two for Whirlaway during the course of the year 2001 that are starting in 2002. In total, 2,281 jobs were retained for Lorraine County. 1,646 jobs were created. We anticipate yet another, an additional 250 jobs to be created by these four new abatements. It saw a expenditure or increased payroll for Lorraine County of $95 million as a result of these tax abatements, and also a $280 million real and personal property investment into Lorraine County as a result of these abatements. The average abatement ends up calculating out as an average at 65%, and the life average would be seven years. We wish to thank the Commissioners and their representatives that participated in those two days of meetings. Certainly, our staff and the auditor had two representatives there as well going through, and all of the cities and companies and school districts that were involved in this process. We thought we should take a moment and express this. Thank you.
Before you leave, Ron, what was the number of jobs again? Would you...
The jobs retained was 2,281. The jobs created were 1,646, and we anticipate an additional 250 jobs to yet be created. You know, some of these have, most of them have a three-year startup, so most of those jobs will come with the four new ones in 2001, but there are a couple that started in 2000 or '99 that are still creating jobs.
2,281 retained, 1,646 created, with a potential of another 250.
I wouldn't say potential, with 250 more coming.
Okay, just take the word potential.
Potential out, right.
Next time, give that to her, so she can put it in print, so we can look at it.
We will work diligently to get those 250 as those tax abatements start.
Thank you. They have to meet that quota?
Yes, they have to meet that quota, and we work with them. I should point out, too, that this is the... Our jurisdiction lies in Lorraine County, with the exception of the city of Alariah and Lorraine that run their own tax abatement, so these jobs and investments do not include the numbers that are realized in the city of Alariah and Lorraine.
Also, Ron, what happens to those ones that have expired? Will they come back? Can they come back?
They can only come back if they make any new hires or investment levels. Certainly, they can. We're not aware of any that are working on there unless they are expanding or picking up new ventures.
They're not going to be leaving, are they?
No.
Okay.
What about Ford? They're expanding out here. Have you guys worked with them yet?
With Ford?
Yeah.
Ford just had an Avon plant tax abatement. That was one of the three that terminated...
That expired.
Yeah, expired. The city of Avon takes the lead on that. We have communicated, as much as Ford will allow us, a willingness to sit down and talk about tax abatement if they're doing a new product line and expansion in the Avon plant. So, we've made that offer, so has Mayor Smith with the city of Avon.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you for giving me this airtime.
And thanks. Thanks to everybody that participated, because I know my assistant did, and your staff and everybody, and it does involve all the communities and school boards, like you said. So, thanks again. We want to recognize them.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
I'd like to issue a notice to proceed letter to Plas Brothers Paving Incorporated, the Larry, Ohio, for the parking lot rehab south side of Temple Court of the Administration Building, effective March 25, 2002. The contract was awarded by Resolution 02174 on March 7, 2002.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
I'd authorize the county administrator to negotiate a contract with Amherst Township, Ohio, to become part of Lorraine County's health care, effective April 1, 2002, expiring December 31, 2004.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to ask to modify this resolution. It may have been presumptuous to me, but I already have the contracts here, and I'd like to modify to enter and approve their contract. They're all standard health care contracts. The one thing that I would still require is the ability to work with them on their reserve payments and how many months they make their reserve payments. We haven't quite finished that. There's no problem with the reserve, but we want to make it as easy for the township to pay that reserve factor as possible, and we'll work that out by MOU as we've done the other three, since they're joint recent.
I'll amend, as the mover, the motion. I'll amend to authorize the contract...
Effective April 1st.
As it's listed on the agenda. So, negotiating is to accept.
Jim, CCAO, the other day, we were discussing the health insurance, and counties are really having some difficulty with this, and CCAO is going to be asking for a survey on different counties, and they did talk about adding additional people and what that means to our insurance and how it reduces what the employees have to pay and what the counties have to pay. So, at some point, I may ask you for some type of report that I can go back with to let them know what Lorraine County's doing and how, how we're doing in our insurance.
I certainly would mind helping you straighten them out.
Well, I think I'd like to see you send a letter to them and maybe get in the newsletter about what we are doing. I think it'd be...
It's a good idea.
We could certainly do that. Mr. Foote, can you take that?
Just wake him up.
A lot of counties are not self-insured the way we are.
They're not doing as well as we are.
Exactly.
Things are changing. We've seen some cost increase. We're trying to stay on top of those, but we're growing. We have 1,860 contracts now with about 6,000 users, and we have the best game, lowest rates in town. That's because the Commissioners and your staff have spent a great deal of time making sure that happens.
But you know, sometimes I really feel guilty when I go to the doctor or the hospital and use that health insurance when I know that there are people out there that don't have health insurance, can't get prescriptions, and it really makes me feel like, should I really use this?
Well, this is the time to plug the SaveWell program then, okay? It's time for a commercial on SaveWell.
Yeah, I think we're over 4,000 people.
We're, we're growing.
Yeah.
We get calls periodically. It's nice when, normally from, from some of our older residents, they call in and they're grateful that they've saved a few dollars on a prescription here and there. We're getting ready to post that information on the internet so that it'll be available to everybody. But where would you like to...
Well, just I want to say that, that I was asked again within the last two weeks, that there's no cost or obligation on the part of the person, and I said absolutely none. And so, you need to give the phone number or something. I don't have it, or the source code.
I have to be honest, but no, we don't walk around with it.
You don't? Why not?
But I will bring it to our next meeting, and we can, we can give it out again.
And there was a blurb in the senior year's newspaper, a nice little article, this last edition. It gave them the phone number and the source code. You have to use that, but there are a lot of people. It's, it's small, but it's better than none.
It's, it's small, but I only know two or three other public entities that are doing this, and we've had calls from other counties, and our neighbors to the west in Huron County...
Huron.
Are, are, we were able to send our consultant over and put a program into place for those folks over there when they heard about what we're doing here.
Wonderful.
So, it's trickle-down effect, but we were, we were at the, at the lead.
Once again, Lorraine County is first.
Yeah, someone called, someone called me yesterday, and they didn't have insurance, and just to fill in, I suggested the SaveWell prescription card, and they called Sandy, and to find out, they were already on it. So, it was, it was a good feeling to know that this person was saving something anyway, but...
I'll, I'll amend my second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
I'd authorize the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners to provide emergency home repair assistance to Eugene McGuire, Raymond and Deborah Wagner of Leary Township, and Wilfredo and Carmen Ciza in Sheffield Lake through its CDBG fiscal year 2001 grant. Eugene McGuire and Leary Township received foundation repair from Logsdon and Sons Incorporated for $5,700. Raymond and Deborah Wagner of Leary Township, a septic replacement with Kodiak Construction, $5,830.84. Wilfredo and Carmen Ciza of Sheffield Lake receive a new boiler and hot water tank with Geisel Heating and Air Conditioning, $5,400. These are the lowest and most responsive quotes received, and the above contracts will be paid from the emergency home repair account.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Can I just throw this in? Excuse me, but we were talking about this health insurance, but I don't know. There might be a lot of people that don't realize, low-income people, that if they contact the Job and Family Services Department, and oftentimes, just, just a form, an application form is sufficient where they don't have to go into the department, but they may qualify for Medicaid or, or some kind of child insurance for their children. I'm, I'm not certain of the telephone number, but they also have a telephone number where people can call.
We also, we also have an outreach person in the Leary Health Department and the Lorraine Health Department. So, if they, if they don't have the opportunity to go to ODJS out, out in Leary Township, they can visit one of the local health departments and be provided that information also.
Yeah, sometimes people are embarrassed to go to the Jobs and Family Service Department. That's why I'm saying there is an application they could fill out and just mail in. Sorry about the interruption, but I thought it was important for people to know.
Okay.
Like to advertise for proposals from profit and not-for-profit agencies to provide services for adult daycare, homemaker, home health aides, adult shelter, and adult guardianship for the Department of Job and Family Services. These proposals will be received until 2:00 PM on Monday, April 15, 2002. I'd like to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on March 28 and April 5, 2002.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd authorize loaning $121,455 to the City of Lorraine, Ohio, for the right-of-way on Colorado Avenue in Lorraine, Ohio, out of the county engineers' bond funds. Resolution number 01-1006-A, adopted November 1, 2001, authorized this office to spend up to $138,545 from the bond fund to pay for the right-of-way on Colorado Avenue. These funds are to be reimbursed by ODOT. After the appraisals were completed, the appraised cost on the right-of-way was actually $260,000. On March 11, the City of Lorraine passed ordinance 31002, agreeing to repay the county engineer over a four-year period, beginning in 2003, the amount of $121,455. Our county would loan these funds to the city out of the engineer's bond funds. This will supply sufficient funds to purchase the right-of-way that has already agreed and began eminent domain proceedings on the parcels that have not signed. ODOT has indicated they cannot fund these additional amounts. The engineer has contacted NAWACA, and preliminary indications are that there may be additional federal funds to pay the $121,455. If so, in so, the loan would, would repair, will be repaid from federal funds.
Also move for approval. I am sure you're going to ask the engineer to comment on this, but I will say that last Friday, I was at a NAWACA Transportation Advisory Committee meeting, and Mayor Fulton had just left our TIS meeting, which is the subcommittee of the TAC, and he said that he had received positive response from NAWACA about supplying these additional funds. So, I think it's, it'll all come together, but this is something that needs to be done so the City of Lorraine can proceed with this project that we've worked on for so long.
I'll second.
Any more questions? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
I'd designate Nate Saturday, May 18, 2002, as Lorraine County Tire Collection Day. Central Ohio Contractors will be the contractor for this event. Collection will be held from 9:00 AM through 3:30 PM at various locations within the county, and those will be listed in the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez comments?
I have some significant comments this morning, so you may want to go, we have a 10:30 public hearing. You may wish to go to that before I start.
You can't be done in three minutes?
Absolutely not.
Okay. We won't go to the hearing. We got to wait until exactly 10:30, so we might as well. No, we can jump over you.
I have a couple of housekeeping things I can do that can be done.
Okay. I don't think Jerry likes us going a couple of minutes early, so...
I'm going to be requesting a resolution to amend Resolution 2-88 to read as follows, and I'll explain it to you afterwards. It should say, "And the funding source for the increase in the worst-fought investment, we have funds for the employment network operations and service. The two sources of funding totaling $475,770 are $438,668 for rapid response funding for dislocated worker, for ITs and other training as needed, $37,102 for one-stop implementation funds." This is a housekeeping resolution. You already passed a resolution agreeing to the funds. ODJS is saying we need to split them. Our resolution had them all lumped into one. They won't make payment on this until we split these two numbers out. It's, it's a bit abstract to you, but there's supporting paperwork. I'll leave that with the clerk. This is nothing more than housekeeping, no changes whatsoever. They wanted the resolution modified, and obviously, I just want to make sure we get our funds out into the community. So, I'm asking for a resolution to make that change.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Jim, does this go to Roxy?
Yes. Madam Clerk, would you also make me a copy? That was my only one. And the, if you could have the resolution done rapidly and communicated to Mr. Ogles so that he can access the dollars, I'd be appreciative. I think that consumes three minutes here, so...
Ready for the hearing, Roxanne? Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled for the Carlisle Farms Number One and Number Two, Carlisle Township. Detention basin maintenance costs. Developer Scott Dillon. He has requested the detention basin and outlet pipe for the subdivision deplaced on perpetual maintenance in accordance with Highway Code Section 6131.63. This basin is constructed on the west side of State Route 301 and will benefit two subdivisions plus six lot splits. For A, Carlisle Farms Number One on the east side of State Route 301 is planted, plus six lot splits along Slyke Road. And B, Carlisle Farms Number Two, 21 sublots with new road to be constructed in the future on the west side of State Route 301. Each subplot benefiting from these drainage items shall pay their prorated share by acreage, which amounts to 5 percent of the total construction cost of $43,800. The 5 percent of $43,800 is $2,190 per year, which will be paid by all sublots. Property owners would pay 5 percent per year. This money would stay in an account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for repairs or maintenance. And also, at this time of this hearing, the developer has requested that Carlisle Farms Number Two, the name be changed to Ravines Edge Number One. Resolution number 02151, adopted February 21, 2002, has scheduled this hearing. Property owners were, received a notice of this hearing by certified mail on March 11, 2002, and a notice was published in the Chronicle Telegram on February 27 and March 6, 2002.
Okay. Jerry, would anybody like to speak? They have to be sworn in, so please stand.
If anybody thinks they're going to have any comments or make any statements or anything about, they're asked to stand and be sworn in. Do you wish to swear or affirm the statements that you shall give, so that you shall answer in the court under the penalty of law perjury? I'm the developer of Scott Dillon, the Braintree Development, and just wanted to comment that the second phase is called Ravines Edge One, not Carlisle Farms Two. Is there any additional information you would need of me?
Do you have any comments anymore?
No, I do not.
Okay. Well, thank you. Engineer, do you have any comments?
Nothing further. Just that the, the detention base was already constructed, so now we're ready to tie in Number Two, Ravines Edge Number One. I'm saying, and that, this will serve as 46 lots, and in each lot benefited will pay their prorated share every year for our maintenance.
State your name, too, for...
Oh, Wayne Malecki, county engineer.
Thanks, Juan.
Office, thank you.
Okay, is that it?
That's all.
Thank you. Any Township trustees here to speak? Any property owners here to speak? I guess the Commissioners have to make either an approval or reject this request. Are we prepared to do that today?
Also move for approval.
Second.
Any more discussion?
No, the changes, the name changes.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Conclude the public hearing.
Do I have to make that motion, or no? Do I have to close the public hearing?
Oh, okay.
It's concluded. There you go.
Bishop. I was trying to get the resolution. Oh, Amherst Township.
Okay. Do you have the Amhersts that...
Is that it?
Back to you, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Commissioner. As we've been keeping the board aware, we've been working on our Justice Center financing, preparing for our groundbreaking on May 3. Our schedule was to award bids on April 18. We were going to be receiving the bids on April 10. I'm pleased to inform you once again that we still are well on track to that, but we would like a little bit more time on working on our financing for about a week of additional time. What I'm going to propose to the Board, and this will be well within our timeframes, is that we award part of the bids on April 18 for approximately $14 million, and we award the balance of the bids on April 25. In order to award on April 18, we have to have the availability of the $14 million, which needs to be certified by the auditor's office. We're fairly close to that sum right now with our Q construction money that we transferred last year. We've also put approximately $1,400,000 aside towards the Justice Center in this year's budget. What I'd like to do is move that money to Q construction by way of an advance. I'm going to ask for a resolution to do that so that we can award the partial bills, partial bids on April 18, thereby keeping the project on track and affording us a little bit more time so we don't have to rush on our bond issue. And I'd like to read this resolution for you. So, I'm requesting a resolution authorizing and directing the Commissioners Budget Department to fiscally implement the advance of $1,435,000 presently appropriated within the county's general fund for the Justice Center project to the Q Construction Justice Center Fund, and to appropriate such amount in the Q Construction Fund, set $1,435,000 to be refunded to the county's general fund upon the issuance and deposit of proceeds of the Justice Center general obligation bond debt issued to the Q Construction Justice Center Fund. I'll pass this to you for your review. Once again, in summary, this will allow us to award the first $14 million a bid, which will keep the project on track, and then we will award the remainder of the bids upon closing of the bond. The bond should close on April 24, and we should be making the remainder of the bids approval on April 25, and the groundbreaking will be on May 3 as scheduled. This does not deviate from our schedule, but does give us a little added time, and we would appreciate that.
Do we need a certificate of availability? Did you say for the $14 million?
We will, and, and at this point, I'd like Mr. Ogles to possibly come forward and speak a little bit to this issue. As you know, John and Mr. Davis are part of the team that's project managing this, and John can speak better than I can.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Yeah, this really doesn't delay the project. I think that's the main point we're trying to make here. We're working with new consul, bond consul. We're working with new underwriters. There's a lot of work going on. I guess the long and short of that is that, as Jim is saying, there's Phase One and Phase Two of the financing that we're working with these groups on. Phase One, the money that's needed is $14 million. As I said in the past, the Board has wisely put away several millions of dollars in the past. What we're doing here is to allocate another $1.4 million to satisfy that particular need. You have to satisfy, forgive me here, I've had a cold, the flu, so it's a little bit bad for me.
Right, I think that this is an advance.
Yeah.
Do we need to make this as an advance? I mean, does it have to come back to the general fund? Can't we just use it?
That's a good point, Commissioner Vasey. The $1.4 million is termed an advance rather than a transfer. That's very important language. What that means, in effect, is that once the money is advanced to the Q construction, once the proceeds of the bonds come in, we can pull that money back, or the Board can pull the money back.
Is it necessary to do that? Can't we just pay this and not borrow that much money then?
You can, Commissioner, but I would recommend the flexibility of bringing it back. That gives the Commissioners more flexibility.
So, we can still forgive it later?
That's correct. You can transfer it back. That's precisely right. Later as a permanent transfer of money, or you could keep it in the general fund. So, by advancing it, you get flexibility. By quote, transferring it today, you don't have the flexibility to bring it back in the general fund. So, my recommendation strongly would be to use the term advance. Then, when the money comes in from the bond proceeds, you can supplement or exchange, in effect, that money that you've advanced and bring the money back if you so desire, or permanently transfer it. But I would strongly recommend the term advance. That gives you flexibility in your financing structure.
Mr. Chairman, also move for approval as outlined by the administrator and the budget director. Any more? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Once again, further, I need to repeat this...
Once again, further, I need to repeat this, we are on schedule and on track. This works within our timeframe, no modifications here.
I appreciate what you and your team's doing, too.
Thank you, sir.
I know it's not, it's not easy task.
Well, uh, the next task that I'm going to discuss with you is probably gonna be more difficult than the Justice Center, and that's finding parking for all our employees. While the Justice Center is being built, we are going to be faced with a, uh, potential shortage of parking spaces, and I do approve, I appreciate you approving the proposal from the Y, uh, that gave us some additional breathing room in that issue. Some of the things that I'm gonna outline here for you will be expanded upon further by Ms. Davis, who has been really doing a dynamite job at, uh, trying to coordinate all of this. We still think we're short a bit on the parking, too. The broader concept that I'm gonna be asking the board to decide upon is, uh, taking our parking deck, uh, number one, and making that completely employee parking with no parking for the public. Uh, and I will address public parking issues as part of this process in a moment. The reason I'm going to recommend that is because I normally don't have the ability to try to tow people out of the garage if they're parking inappropriately. It's almost impossible to do so. And it's, and, and the parking deck is secure, it's easier for me to control people coming in with passes than it is on some of our flat lots. That will allow us to issue about four hundred and thirty passes. Uh, we have to maintain a certain amount of, uh, handicap access spots, even if it's part of the parking lot. The corner lot right across from the admin building, which is very, uh, easy for the public to use, uh, I'm gonna recommend that that goes to public parking, no employee parking. I also am working, and Ms. Davis has been working with, having a company come in and monitor that lot. I'm gonna recommend that that become two-hour parking, just like all the City of Alaria spots, and that that be patrolled. My concern is that the construction workers will come downtown and they'll fill up the lots, and there'll be no parking for the employees and the public. Uh, I can't tell a construction worker at seven o'clock in the morning from a member of the public if they wanna park in any of our lots. Right now, they can come into the deck and pay their three dollars for the day, which I think they would do, and we can't keep them out. We are gonna provide parking. Hopefully, we're gonna reach some terms, uh, with the Alaria Library to use their grounds adjacent to the Train Depot, uh, just a few blocks from here. We're also repaving the lot behind the parking deck, which will afford us additional thirty-four spaces there. We've just completed, uh, uh, purchase of a lot, uh, adjacent to the Bobbles Building from the city. That will provide us some additional parking there, but we're still going to be very, very squeezed. We've come up with a formula, we want to reissue parking passes. We're gonna have colored zones, red, white, blue, and orange, uh, to give our passes. Right now, employees with a county parking pass can park in any of our available lots. That won't be, after April fifteenth, if you approve some of these plans we're laying out, they'll, we'll be assigned to a lot, and that's where they will park. They won't be able to park in the other lots. This way, we can get a total number and know who's coming and going from those lots. We're probably going to locate, uh, juror parking, uh, down the public parking lot that Alaria has on, on Washington Avenue and go back to the shuttle. Uh, Commissioner Moore, you weren't here a few years ago. What we used to do before we had these lots over here, uh, we used to shuttle the jurors up and down from Washington Avenue. We provided us a small bus, and one of our maintenance workers brought the jurors back and forth. Uh, it wasn't a very pleasant experience, and it didn't, it was, uh, at times difficult and, and had some, uh, tension in it, but we need to go back to doing that. Last year, I, I, uh, procured one of the old, uh, transit buses that we did a little bit of work on, and we have that bus available, and we're working, we're getting some of our maintenance workers a CDL, plus we have a smaller van that doesn't require a CDL to do that. In addition, this lot's, and behind the parking deck is not going to be done in time for us to utilize, so I'm just gonna have, not have the availability of those thirty-four spots until sometime in May. It wasn't through lack of planning, but it was through availability of weather to get the job underway. Uh, just, we just weren't able to get it done because of, of time constraints and weather, not, not planning. We planned for this properly. What I'm gonna recommend is that we take all our county fleet vehicles and we park them at the park and ride adjacent to the county dog pound. Uh, people that need a vehicle will have to drive out there, drop their vehicle, and pick up a county vehicle. I don't know how long that's gonna last. I have talked with, uh, the county, had, excuse me, Ms. Davis has spoken with the county maintenance director, uh, to provide additional security lighting out there. The sheriff's department does, uh, do extra patrols on that lot out there, and our dog pound's adjacent, and we, we're open six days a week for about twelve hours a day. So there is a, a certain amount of security out there. That's not gonna be very pleasing to a lot of people on the county vehicles, but it has to be done. Uh, I did look into, uh, Ms. Vasie's request on, on the lots out by Haddaway. If we're unable to reach, uh, good economic terms with the Alaria Library to park the, uh, construction workers, uh, on that site, we may have to, to go to that site at Haddaway. My concern out there is that we're still responsible for busing those folks into downtown to the work site, and that got, we did get some cost figures last year from both transit, and we tried to work them up, our people doing it, and it was very, very costly to do that. We're hoping that we can park them over here. There's a, there's some added benefit to park them over here. Uh, they'll be passing through downtown Alaria. I'm sure the merchants, you know, for, uh, certain establishments over there will be, uh, be grateful that they're, they're going through the downtown area to go to that parking lot. So if we can keep them close to the downtown, not only is it limiting our costs, but it also, uh, will encourage spending in the downtown Alaria area, so that's an additional benefit that, uh, I'm hoping occurs and stimulates that area.
It is possible, too, though, that they may have tools in their vehicles that they need, uh, to walk to get. So the closer they are, probably the better off we are.
Right. Thank you for pointing out, Commissioner. We, we do have some backup plans that we can use the Train Depot. Uh, there's parking spaces down there. I had originally thought to, uh, to, uh, move, uh, our fleet vehicles down to the parking depot, but I feel to be more secure, uh, out in the parking lot, uh, park and ride lot. But, uh, I also don't wanna count on the Train Depot, uh, over a period of, of the next few years as a long-term solution, uh, because I believe that, uh, funding will be made available at, at the state and federal level to, uh, get that project underway, and that would, if we're using that as part of our long-term strategy, it will complicate that strategy. With that, Karen, would you, would you explain some of, Karen gave you a handout, would you explain some of the thinking on these lots and how you...
Karen Davis, D-A-V-I-S. Um, basically, what we've done here is we've tried to provide parking for the employees as close to the facilities that they work in as possible. We've gotten a few stragglers here and there. There's, uh, we had to allow for a certain amount of handicap parking for each parking lot, and with the Y's parking lot, they helped us out a lot, 'cause there was thirty-nine spaces there, and, um, we were able to use that lot for adult probation, which would be real convenient for them instead of them crossing the, the road. What we've done basically is we've taken the parking lot over by the Commerce Court area and the adult probation lab, and that would be issued parking permits, and they would be blue permits, and each permit would have a number on it. There's a total of forty parking spaces there, so we'd have one through forty. And basically, the lots are, um, outlined the same. The courthouse lot would be the red lot with forty spaces, the Y lot, the yellow lot with thirty-nine spaces. We've also have Ron Twining's parking lot. They have, uh, a total of fourteen parking spaces and only eleven employees, so we're gonna stick a few of, uh, the administration building employees in there. And there'll be a total of forty-five spaces available for the public on the corner of Middle and, uh, Third Street.
Instead of count those three, we're gonna sneak in all of the...
That does not count those three, we're sneaking in.
Oh, that'll be forty-eight, hopefully.
Um, the only thing I think Jim did not mention was the fact that these numbers are for existing permit holders only. There is no space available at this time for any new employees.
I don't think we're hiring any new ones pretty soon, anyway.
Well, uh, a couple of things, and, 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 uh, that's correct. We estimate right now about twenty short to start with.
Right.
Uh, so that's one issue. The second issue is, uh, over time, there's been growth in other departments, whether we hire or not, we're, we're only a small part of the parking situation down here, sir. We also have the issue of visiting judges and visiting magistrates that we have to deal with. We're gonna be restricting some of the, uh, officials, uh, both elected and appointed, that have parking spaces in the deck right now, but only come down here seldom, uh, once a week or once every other week. They're not gonna have spots. It's not gonna make them too happy, but we will provide for four or five in the back of the new lot that we're paving out behind the building for county vehicles, and when they visit us down here, they're gonna have to bring a county vehicle, uh, or they're gonna have to be a designated person to park there. It'll be temporary parking for them. Right now, we're, we're using, we're utilizing a whole space, and they're never here. So these, these are, well, I don't wanna use the word drastic, they're, they're, they're very significant changes.
Well, they're not, I mean, when you say the public won't be allowed to park here, I don't think it's gonna be an issue for, uh, it's gonna be more of an issue of the contract workers that come in and use our building, the lawyers that come in, I think that's where the issue's gonna come in, don't you think?
Right.
Now, in the recorder's office and the law library, when, when you totaled up the four hundred and thirty spaces, are those actual county employees? Are you including contracted employees that come in?
County employees. What I did, um, is I contacted each department and asked them, "How many employees you have?" And they told me.
Okay.
So that's where all these numbers come from.
So that's where our issues are gonna come in at, and I've already gotten complaints from some of the people about the City of Alaria. Councilmen?
I see Councilman, Councilman Blevins is with us.
That's why I had to throw that in.
Together with the Safety Service Director, Miss Drykunlaw.
Yep, he's talking about, talking about the two-hour, uh, parking and, and the sheriff only up front, and they had some issues with that.
Well...
So, I mean, some of these things that, like, the sheriff's department's only here till four-thirty, yet it says, you know, that some of these people are working past four-thirty, and they're feeling like they're being ticketed for no other reason except, you know?
Interestingly enough, uh, the, the situation when the Justice Center is complete will be similar to this admin building. The City of Alaria will control the parking in front of the Justice Center. So that's been an issue here, and it may be an issue that we need to, uh, deal with with the city, and, and hopefully we'll have some favorable outcome that we don't end up with the same problem in front of the Justice Center that we have here.
We have a parking garage, we won't have any issues, right?
We do have a parking garage, sir.
I didn't, I didn't hear that. Did you, Commissioner Vasie?
Uh, to be discussed at another time, I think.
Thank you. First things first.
Have you had a chance to contact the priest at Saint Mary's about their parking?
Karen?
Um, I called this morning and left a message in, and he's supposed to give me a call back. So, you know, we'll have to wait and see on that one.
Ms. Davis' recollection of that issue was similar to mine, that, uh, they were very, uh, amenable to us parking in their spaces, uh, during the summer months, but during the school, school, uh, year, that they, they, they didn't want to do that.
But you never know.
They use the school ground for children to play.
Yeah, they have some in the back, there's some area that they, if they knew that they were gonna get paid for the, for us to use it, they might be willing to give up some space.
We're, we're gonna speak to them again, as, as you suggested. Uh, it's, it's a wonder Karen and I haven't been picked up. We've been, uh, cruising the back alleys and lots and every place around, uh, Alaria, looking for...
That's not our personal stuff.
All right, okay.
But you know, we, we assume that they won't...
Individually, not together.
I think. We, we have been everywhere.
I was pretty explicit about that.
Yes, yes, you were. Uh, we, we have been looking everywhere. We've, we've gone, you know, every direction, looking for availability within reason. Now, we have been offered some parking areas that are not within reason in the cost, and I have not presented those to the board. Uh, some of them are a bit on the absurd side, so we're not that desperate yet. Uh, we may get that way. I'm hoping we don't. Uh, so we still have some other issues, uh, that we have to tackle, which is gaining more parking. I, I guess what I'm asking the board for here, I need to implement this parking change on April fifteenth. We're gonna start fencing off the site, which is, and it's, it's a very positive sign that we're breaking ground on May third. I don't have a lot of time left.
What do you, what do you want? Do you want us to pass legislation so we can, uh, not allow people to come into the parking lot, they have to ticket? You could do that, or is that what you...
I, I, just some kind of verbal, uh, affirmation that you find the plan that we're laying out to be somewhat suitable. Uh, there's never gonna be a perfect plan, and there's never gonna be a plan that doesn't affect or adversely affect the number of people. We're doing the best we can not to have that happen. We'll also be presenting a, a contract to you for somebody that patrolled a lot on the corner at no cost to the county, uh, but they will be towing, and, and, uh, Commissioner Vasie and I had quite a bit of discussion over this yesterday. Remember the days when we did try to tow from some of our flat lot and, and, and the things that, that occurred afterwards? It wasn't very pleasing, but it's something that needs to be done. Commissioners, you will be getting some adverse, uh, calls and complaints and probably some personal visits if somebody's car is towed from that lot. We, we've been through that in the early nineties before. It needs to be done, though. There's simply no way, if we clog up that parking lot with people working on the construction sites, there will be no parking for reasonable, uh, people that have some business to do in this, in this building. It simply won't exist.
I think these guys are gonna want us to get their meetings over in two hours or less now, so that's what, that's what it's gonna affect, right?
Well, some people will expect us to pay their towing bill. I mean, we've had this in the past where they...
Oh, I don't think so.
But they, they approach us and ask us to pay the towing bill and, uh, the fee to get their car out of impound.
Well, I believe Mr. Ennis is gonna help us out with that by giving us some language to put on a sign, so that we can notify the people who are parking there.
I think communication is the key.
Yeah, exactly.
If we approve this today, and you're going to send letters out to all the departments affected, this is the plan and the reasoning behind it.
And, and they will, yes, and we will be doing a lot of posting. The reason I'm presenting this now is we have a lot of signage to remove and a lot of signage to put up.
You working with the engineer's office on that?
We will be through the maintenance department. Uh, they've always been very supportive with the signing, uh, signage for the, for the parking decks.
Thank you, John.
There is a lot of work to do. Uh, there's gonna be some employees that are gonna be, uh, pretty irate, too, because they're not gonna get parking passes, or they're not gonna get them where they want them. Uh, Commissioners, this is not an easy issue. It's not one that's going to be resolved just by this discussion and decisions here. There's gonna be other things, I believe, that are gonna fall out along the way. We've tried to think of everything, but I know there's gonna be more issues with this, and we're gonna have to revisit it.
But this takes care of all the pro- parking issues with all the employees at the county, correct?
It, it captures the, the, a, a great deal of it.
Without any new ones, we're not talking about new ones. And then it also captures all the construction workers, it looks like you had a plan for that.
Yes.
Okay, so the...
Recognizing I'm still twenty, twenty, we estimate twenty spots short. There's one last leg of this, and, and...
Are your twenty spaces short?
Yes, sir, I am.
I know, reading this.
Did, did...
What's this, after removing custodians? What are you doing, getting rid of them?
I was getting...
They come in at night.
Oh, we're all coming in clean now?
I was getting ready to, uh, to go to that, that prom. And I, I, uh, well, I guess as good a time as any. I really haven't talked to the union, uh, too much on this. Jeff, have you, have you...
Yeah.
We've laid a little bit of fa- foundation. I'm probably gonna ask that the custodians come in at five rather than four. That's fifteen parking spots, and at five o'clock, uh, you realize how empty this deck is.
It's a big wind tunnel, just...
Yes, you have to hold on for the sucking sound going out. Uh, with them coming in at five, that'll free up parking spots for them, uh, rather than having them come in four and trying to circle what will be a very full lot, trying to find space.
So is that, that's how many? That's fifteen?
Roughly fifteen.
So is that, are you including that in your twenty?
No.
So you're talking about, after removing, you're, you're saying we're still twenty short after you deal with the custodians, right?
Yes.
So where are you gonna get the twenty?
I'll figure it out, sir.
So what do you need, uh, you're asking us to make a decision that's not gonna correct it?
I have a ninety-eight percent plan, it's better than no percent plan. So, we need to move forward with this, and I will continue to work this issue. If I'm not able to capture enough parking for those 20 people, we're not going to issue those 20 passes, and each one of these departments in the building is going to have to deal with that.
What about the corner lot that you got to issue for public?
Well, we have to see how much utilization we get by the public in it before we give out those spots to the employees. We really need to provide for public parking and suitable public parking. Remembering, these 20 people can go down to the lot on Lake Avenue, the city lot, park down there.
Washington Avenue.
Washington, excuse me, thank you. Also, Chris is here. I understand that you'll have some freed-up parking soon behind the city hall, right, for public?
That would be correct, but we're not sure with that. Our schedule has been delayed a little bit, too, so it's not airing due to time frame due.
Well, Hal, I know you're signaling, Hal, but...
This is a quick answer.
Yeah, so, but that's not going to happen this summer either. But somewhere, while we're involved with our project, their project will be completing, and there'll be some additional public parking that's not available now.
But this summer, I think you can pick some spots up from St. Mary's once school is out, the first part of gym, so maybe it'll help.
For pardon.
And they've always been very, very receptive.
Yeah, that takes care of the time pressure that you're going to have. But where's these 20, where are the 20 coming from?
Well, let's see, your one.
I know, so I'm wondering. Which is fine. Try towing that Hummer.
We're going to take that and we're going to spread it if we're not able to find additional spots. Excuse me, we're going to spread it over all the departments. Nobody's going to be hit.
Okay, so you haven't, what you've done is you've added up the total space and you just know there's 20 short.
Correct.
They're not in each, they're not in the yellow lot, the white lot? I mean, you don't know who's going to where. You haven't identified who's going to which lot yet, have you?
No, we identified by departments and agency, though. Like Solid Waste is over on Commerce Court. We would put them in the blue lot over there.
Right, but you have 40, how many employees? You got total parking, 40. You don't know how many employees are in this. You got Solid Waste, you've kind of all identified. How many employees that you got in this list? Are we talking about the blue lot? We're talking about the blue lot.
I have an itemized list of each department and the number of employees also. I just thought for ease of looking at it, I wouldn't include all of them.
I was just interested. It's nothing, I guess, whether that we decide.
We will...
Can I get a copy of that list?
Sure.
Okay.
We will try to make the impact as, as...
Can't make it painless.
Well, you know, Commissioner, this...
It has to be done, though.
Yes, it does. And I believe, once we implement most of this, we'll find that we possibly can issue a few more passes in the parking deck than spaces allow, because we do have, not every county employee, I know they're wonderful people, but not every county employee comes to work every day.
Well, they have vacation.
Right.
And sick leave.
Right. Yes. So, I believe we'll be able to issue possibly up to 110% on the passes, depending on the average absenteeism. I don't have those factors if you don't have them.
No, what will happen, we first come, first served. You drive through, you don't make it, you're walking, and you go down there. That's it. So you're...
People will come to work earlier.
Well, yeah.
But I'm...
That's what's going to happen, then. As long as we got a place for the overflow, and if they don't get here in time, they're just going to have to go down to Washington Avenue and they're going to have to walk, right?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Walking is healthy.
But I don't, I don't want to issue more than 100%.
Well, you said 110%.
I said we may be able to issue up to 110%. I want to wait and do the 100% first and see how that works. I know you want, I don't want, I don't want employees spending an hour driving around the parking deck and coming in to work late or getting back from lunch late because they said they couldn't find a parking spot. That'll happen, and I want to preclude that from happening also. That's another issue that I get very well chatted hand very quickly.
I'm sure HR Director will take care of that issue.
Whatever you do, please, don't stop contacting the priests, even if you have to pester them, because I remember when we just started the Justice Center, and I wanted to see it over here by where St. Mary's is, and everybody kept saying, "They're not going to sell, they're not going to sell." But when I called them up, they were very favorable about selling because they want to move the school back there and get those kids away from crossing that alley. So, anything is possible, so don't just assume that they won't allow us to park there. Keep pestering them.
So, what do you want us to do? What do you need? What do you need to go?
What do I want? I want you to approve my plan.
Motion to approve. What do you want? I'm waiting for someone to add in the parking garage on this line here.
A new parking garage?
Yeah, I'm trying to see where that would fit in. I guess I got to wait a little bit longer.
Whoa.
I think so.
Okay, I'll wait a little bit longer.
So you're going to make a motion to approve it as presented?
Oh, oh, okay, the motion's going to have to include, okay, I find it hard to believe we have to make a motion.
Commissioners, I really don't need a resolution by the board to implement this plan. I just need some agreement that you see that we're doing the right thing here.
Shame on you for not supporting your administrator.
Well, no, I just don't see why we need a resolution.
Shame on you. Make a motion.
Well, I don't think, I support my administrator on the parking...
So make a motion to approve this plan.
But I, Commissioners, please, thank you, but...
It's not your turn.
It's not your turn. We're talking, okay? You've got more airtime than we have, so you can be quiet now, okay? Just be quiet for a moment. The three of us agreement on this? Are you agreeable?
I agree.
Okay, then we are agreeable to the plan that Karen and Jim has put together. How's that?
Okay, and afford me a little bit of, that's all I need, because that gives me a little flexibility. Past the resolution, I may be locked in.
Exactly. I'd rather just, you got support.
I'm sorry.
You got the support.
I very appreciate it, thank you. I want to thank Ms. Davis for wrestling with this issue for the last few weeks with me. It hasn't been an easy task. If the Justice Center is only half as hot as this is, we'll be fine.
Well, it's going to get a lot funner. I appreciate the work, though. This is a good job.
All in the name of progress.
And you'll get me that list, right? Okay, thanks.
I think probably we'd all like a list, Karen.
That, I'm about finished. Thank you.
Oh, thank goodness.
Okay, this is the county prosecutor, Mr. Innes.
I do need to have an executive session regarding pending litigation with the Commissioners. Should be brief.
Commissioners, report.
Commissioner Vassie?
Oh, I was just going to tell you, I do have the SaveWell number. That's the prescription discount program. And it also covers vision care, up to 20 to 60% savings on vision care. The telephone number is 1-877-728-3935. And I said that real slow in case somebody doesn't have a pencil.
But you also need the source code number.
I mean, source code, code.
When you call that number, you have to give them a source code.
I don't know if it's on here. Okay, the source code is 1-2-0-0, and that has to be mentioned when they call the number. That's about all I have today.
Commissioner Blair?
I just would like to tell you that I was pleased to attend a breakfast this morning in Wellington at the FAA chapter, and they are celebrating, National FAA Week is this week. So the FAA in Wellington, they have about 67 members. Their advisor is Patrick Noble, and I received this invitation from Alexandra Woods, who's the committee chair for FAA Week in Wellington. Tomorrow, they're going to have a parade. Tomorrow afternoon, they're going to parade in tractors around the school and down street. Roxanne should know all about this, and around the Cormay School and back down. So, they're really, and they were really, really interesting kids. It was nice to be there this morning. I was very well-received, and I enjoyed that. Tomorrow, the NREC Committee, National Resource Assistance Council, will meet to grade the applications that we received for the Clean Ohio Funds that are part of District Nine. That's Lorraine, Huron, and Medina Counties. And there were about 13 applications that were taken, about five that were returned. So that's what we're going to do tomorrow, and that's how I'm celebrating my birthday tomorrow with NREC. And I just want to show you what my secretary gives me for my birthday tomorrow. Isn't that neat?
What is it?
Betty Boop. It says the commish, and I want you to know that I think that she can keep her job. Just keep the gifts coming, Joyce. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Two days ago, I met with Tom Kelly at the Fairview Manor Fire. SBA, Small Business Administration, flew up from Atlanta, and the EMA from Ohio districts came out, and everything looked pretty good. The bottom line is, we won't know probably till next Tuesday or the end of the week on whether or not we will get the classification that we need from the federal government. If we do get the classification from the federal government, Governor's Taff Office will then participate also for those people that fall out of the federal government. The main thing that Mr. Kelly has informed us again is that they do have a list of all the names and numbers, so nobody will be missed. The people from the government, from the federal and state, were very impressed at how fast the community came together and provided the necessary assistance for everybody there. So it was a good meeting, and we're hoping, hopefully by the end of next week, we'll have answers. If we get the federal designation, then the state of Ohio will step in. So it's going to be a good thing for the community. I had something else. I was going to mention your birthday. I didn't know whether or not you were going to mention that. So since you did out by yourself, I want to say happy birthday.
Thank you, Davis. I had to own up to it.
Yeah, that's good. I wasn't like that.
It comes with maturity.
Oh, I'm still working on that. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, in our old business, we have a couple items. To approve and enter into agreement between the Board of Commissioners and K. E. McCartney and Associates for miscellaneous sanitary engineering services on an as-needed basis.
Commissioners, Mr. Carney was unable to attend today's meeting. I had thought he would be here. I would ask that you put for further hold until such time as he can be here.
No problem with me.
Well, if no one else has any questions, I talked with him yesterday.
Are you, are you...
I was satisfied.
Okay, great, that's wonderful. I didn't know that. I think Ms. Vassie was, you had the concerns, and I wasn't able to properly address those concerns, and if that's been alleviated, that would be great.
Jerry, you had some concerns, too. Were they addressed in the contract? Ken had mentioned that you went over it with him.
Yes, Karen and I looked through it. There was a question, the original, one question that was raised was whether the bid had been properly broken up. It is, oh, okay, I'm on the next one.
Is this for a one-year term or is this forever?
I think it's, oh, I don't remember.
This is, what I'm wondering is, if we approve and enter into agreement, I'm wondering how, what the, because the term isn't in here. I mean, this is...
Well, it's in the agreement, isn't it?
Madam Clark, you have the agreement, instead, don't you?
It seems like that's what we're voting on it.
There was some time ago that that was passed, with Commissioners?
I think it was.
Pardon me? Would John know? Jerry, do you need a copy?
No, now, I'm just sorry. I thought we were on the second one. Yes, I did talk with Ken Carney, and there were some substantial modifications made after our original discussions, and they amended the agreement to satisfy my question.
But is it a, is there a set term, or is this, are we locking in now?
Roxanne, I think they were in a blue folder.
It's an as-needed...
And it's still here.
I think the entire thing is an as-needed basis. There were some particular projects that we're committing to, but as far as a continuing basis, it's pretty much an as-needed, so that if we don't call them to do things, then we don't use them.
I don't want to interrupt. It says here in Mr. McCartney's letter, the renewal period of this agreement is from February 1st, 2002, to December 31st, 2003.
Looks like, sounds like about a little bit over a year and a half.
Do you want to look at this?
I don't have a problem having a visit every year just to make sure it's okay, but I want to make sure. We're not locking in.
This is the new one. I think Jerry had a concern about $100,000.
This agreement shall be remaining in effect from first, let's go till 2003? Is that what you sent?
It's due September 31st.
18 months.
He said a little over a year, I think.
Do you want to see any of this? Anybody want to see this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't want to watch. That's fine.
What's the board wish to do? You guys want to?
Okay, I'll move.
I'll second. Any more discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
And also to award contract to Bay Mechanical and Electrical Corporation of Lorraine, Ohio, in the amount of $106,300 for the Crest Haven Wastewater Treatment Plant Project for contract number three, which is general and electrical. The engineer's estimate was $97,100, and the bid is within the 10% limit. County engineer and K. E. McCartney and Associates have reviewed and recommends approval. The award is contingent upon the Ohio Public Works Commission approval request to proceed.
Commissioners, if you remember this issue, there was, there were some questions by Mr. Baker concerning this. We have researched the issue pursuant to his request and determined that the matter was in compliance, but I believe Mr. Baker still has a concern, and anyone would like to come forward and talk about that.
My name is Brian Baker, 578 North Main, Amherst. I guess my only concern is, I understand that you can combine the bids. The only concern is, it said they have to bid separate, and when they're bid out separate, you have to put the numbers down. You can combine them after that matter. I know I talked to you yesterday about a gym. There's many jobs out there that you'll see it. Somebody will take out a small portion, just bid it as it, then put the combination in. The revised code in 153, I gave it to you yesterday, it does say that any amount over $5,000 has to have a separate number. If they don't put the separate number in, they can't bid that part of the combination. And if I'm wrong in that, I apologize for taking your time, but I still think that that's how it is. There's been many jobs out there that have been turned down that way, and I do have some more information. I don't have it today, but I will get it to you from a place in Canton where I know it's been turned over for this. So, I mean, and if you have to act on it, I understand it, but I think in the future, I would just ask you to consider this and look into that. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Obviously, we need to take the proper time to ensure compliance with all applicable regulations. Commissioners, I, we ended up referring this to the prosecutor's office, and Jerry, you may want to speak to it a little bit.
Well, we looked at it this week. I had not seen the new materials. There are specific requirements that you bid this out, you break it down. And if you're going to award parts, those, certain parts of it, those certain parts do have to be broken down. If one person does the combination, the only way that person is permitted to get the combination is if they are the lowest bid.
Get each part?
No, it's, it's, well, I think that's what, Brian, what you do is, you look at all the separate parts, and if there's any combination, you can come up at all that comes out lower than this combined bid, then, then you have to take some other combination. But in this particular instance, this one combined bid is lower than any other combination, any way we can put it together, anyhow, this one comes out lower. And my review of that is that, under that circumstance, it is acceptable to take it that way. I will, if the Commissioners wanna...
Jerry, just one, one question for you. I, I don't disagree with the combination. What I'm saying is, it says anything over five thousand dollars has to have a separate bid. If it's in any branch, a branch is a craft, so it's general or electrical. So, they have to show their single number of the electrical and the general. That's what it says in there, anything over five thousand dollars and anything over fifty thousand dollars has to have that. Well, I, I'm not disagreeing that they take the combination. They have to spell those out as a separate bid, is what I'm saying. And, and what I see is Bay Mechanical just put a combination number without spelling out the electrical and without spelling out the general. And, and if I'm wrong, I mean, you can correct me, or we'll get together, but what I'm saying is, they still have to put in there, it says in there, that they have to bid them out separate. They have to show the separate number in there for the branches that are shown, is all I'm asking, and that's what I question. I don't question the combination number. I agree with that. They still have to do them out and show that single, because if they don't show out a single number, they're just, they just put the one number out there, that's not what the revised code says. And that was the question that I had.
Brian, help me to understand this better. You're saying electric, say electric, and what else do you wanna say, for example?
It breaks it out in there, it says plumbing, gas fitting, steam and hot water, and electrical. And what it says is right in, in the revised code, that those have to be out, anything over five thousand dollars has to be bid out separate.
Okay.
You can put it combined, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
After the separate bid?
That's correct, you have to show the separate numbers out, and that wasn't done, and that's the question that I had. I don't disagree with the combination bid, because you can do that, but you still have to, you have to break them out separate by the revised code. And if I'm wrong, Jerry, you can correct me, but I'm almost positive that's what it says in there. They have to show those numbers, they have to be a bit out. I know of two jobs that have been thrown out that way, and I know jobs that contractors that we represent have lost by the same thing that just happened here. They bid them all out as three separates, and then when they combine the numbers, you lose a job. I, I'm just saying they should put the numbers out there so that they're there.
How do you lose the job after you combine them, after they're bid separate?
Well, and what it does is, we would be in a separate, the trade that I represent would be the electrical, we combined in with someone, and when they get down to a combination, it came out to be a lower number. I don't disagree with that. That can be done, but you still have to show your separate number, was the question that I had.
And we need to get an answer before we do the Justice Center, because that's gonna be coming up again.
We already do it on the Justice Center. You have single primes on electrical, you have single, you guys already do it in the county. I guess that was my question, is, everything is bid out as a single prime. And that was my question, and pretty much anything in there, it covers who the entities are that do do them.
Okay.
And what's the issue if we're doing it?
No, we're not doing, what he's saying is that the engineer on this bid didn't do a single bid. That's it, right? Okay, so that's the issue.
They did a single bid, they didn't break out their, they didn't break out a...
Is that how they advertise it, as a single bid?
It, it doesn't matter, I mean, it's advertised.
I'm just asking, I know, I'm just asking.
I don't know how it was advertised, I don't see what it was advertised.
Okay.
And I think they said, Mr. Carney was gonna be here to ask what.
Jerry, are we in compliance?
Well, I would rec, I, I've not looked at that specific issue that Mr. Baker's mentioning now. I would recommend we hold this another week, I'll take another look at that specific issue.
How about you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, your old business?
None.
New business?
I have none.
I guess I could have did this under the report, but I'll do it under new business. But I was at the CCAO Taxation and Finance Committee meeting Friday, and they're talking about the General Assembly authorizing the counties to enact additional taxes. And there was quite a debate on that, some Commissioners are totally in disagreement with it. And I guess one of the issues is that if the counties have the authority to enact an additional sales and use tax, then the, the state will come back and give us less money on some of the mandated areas, because now we have the authority to enact an additional tax. So, they'll force us into enacting. So, there was quite a debate on that, and then it also gave us some background, like in nineteen sixty-seven, the General Assembly authorized counties to enact four permissive taxes for the county purposes. This package of taxes included the permissive sales and use tax, real estate transfer tax, motor vehicle license tax, and utility service tax. And that's quite a good package there. Since this time, the General Assembly has expanded the authority to levy the sales and use tax to one point five percent, has authorized additional piggyback license taxes, has authorized the enactment of a permissive lodging tax, and has authorized permissive cigarette and alcohol beverage taxes in limitation, in limited circumstances. Talk about taxes, and then you wonder why people are discouraged when they hear we're putting a tax on the levy. That's all I have to report on that one.
Commissioner Blair?
I have none, I move, we waive the reading of the board correspondence.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone for public comment?
Elizabeth Rummix, R-U-M-I-C-S Oberlin. I would assume that you all have considered this aspect in that great problem of parking, and parking is always a problem, of course. But I wonder if there is any way to utilize Lorraine County transit, perhaps with special rates, although, of course, the county is already doing a lot to pay for county transit. But as a great supporter of, and user in the past of public transit, I do wonder if perhaps there might not be some people for whom this would not be inconvenient or too rigorous, and where some special arrangement or other might be made. It would help to publicize Lorraine County transit, needless to say, and it might give you one or two or three more spaces.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Anyone else? How do you just come on up?
Robert Kish, Alaria, Seven Seas. Justice Center Parking, all the more proof of the old adage, location, location, location. I told you so.
Did you believe me you before you told us?
But you went ahead and did it anyway. There you go again. Good morning, Commissioners in Lorraine County. I like sunshine, I also like the sunshine law. I also like to thank the Commissioners, and I don't know which far, matter, how it came about, perhaps because of my speaking, but my neighbor got his dog back. Whether it was a web napping or an e-napping, I don't know, but my neighbor's dog is back home, and he said that Commissioners got involved in his case, he doesn't understand how, I wonder. Anyhow, as I stated before, there are two ways to spread light, one is to be the candle, the other is to be the mirror that reflects it. I do not believe anyone, everyone knows they can attain a VHS copy of these meetings. It took me six months to get my first meeting, my first copy, because I tried and tried again, I was successful. The non-compliance of what I feel is the sunshine law has resulted in me waiting until now, I still haven't received the last tape of the December, the last December meeting that we've had. It wasn't available when I came in today. So, there's been a break in the weather when I did get my copies. Now, it looks like perhaps bad weather has returned. Anyhow, there is a darkness in this county, the darkest area being Pittsfield Township. Julie Fitzgerald, now a former Chronicle Telegram reporter, attended a Pittsfield Township meeting, and she was told she could not report on a meeting as she did not reside there. She replied, "Sir, I will have you know I can report on Moscow if I choose to." She wrote her article. The last I heard of Julie, she was working for an Akron newspaper. I believe Pittsfield Township, one of the few townships that do not have weekly newspaper reports, even in their free local advertising papers, they are not covered. And yet, and yet, they receive a fax prior to Commissioners' meetings, even though I have never seen the recipient present in this room. I have seen other township officials here, some several times. I believe if one township receives the fax on the agenda, then the others certainly are entitled to receive a copy also. If not, they are definitely being discriminated against. By the way, I still have not, okay, the last Commissioners' meeting held, I forget the number in attendance, but today, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve people in attendance, which is an improvement. Remember, "They who are not present," and this is a quote, "They who are not present are wrong." So, we need your presence at these meetings. Anyhow, this is to be continued. Tune in next week, thank you.
Thanks, Bob, for your keen insight and editorial comments. Again, a lot of people are, do work, and I, and out and about, the Commissioners do hear about how many people do watch the video, and that's another way to keep the eye on the dollar for us. We do have to move into executive session, so I move to move into executive session.
I'll second. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.